The property is zoned residential agricultural and will be known as the Meta Press Plant Residential Development. The Meta Press PRD land development plans consist of sixty-eight pages which were submitted on our score. That's been marked as exhibit thirty. It includes five pages of exhibits which were submitted on March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, which have been marked as exhibit thirty-three. There's a five-page, as shown on the plan. Those are the modifications that were requested. These modifications are included in the planning commission's recommendation letter. The PRD is designed exceeds township specifications for acreage. The PRD plan exceeds township specifications for open space. The PRD plan meets the township specifications for recreation facilities. In designating portions of the Meta Press PRD as open space, the Meta Press Plan preserves existing slopes and forested areas of the tract of land within the open space. The physical design of the proposed roads within the Meta Press PRD Plan create a practical and simple circulation system that is more than adequate to carry all traffic that might be caused by the development. Water, natural gas, and electric service are available at the site. There are letters from the related utility providers that can be found as exhibits nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. A private onsite wastewater treatment plant will be constructed with the additional capacity to support future development and possibly existing homes located on neighboring properties if they so desire. Provisions have been made to extend utilities to the existing road rights of way. The developer will report a declaration of plant community for the Meta Press Plant Community, which declaration will specifically assign maintenance responsibilities in perpetuity, including for all drainage, wetland conservation, storm sewer easements, stormwater management facilities, the onsite wastewater treatment plant ponds, and open space, and these will all be maintained by the homeowners association. Declarations of plant community have been submitted to the township solicitor for review and they will be a part of the final approval for the Meta Press PRD. The proposed stormwater management facilities assist in the township development, maintenance, and administration of the township's comprehensive program of onsite stormwater management. The post-construction stormwater management report has been marked as exhibit thirty-nine. The traffic impact assessment report was prepared and has been provided, has been marked as exhibit thirty-five. The Meta Press PRD Plan furthers the amenities of light, air, and visual enjoyment by preserving the undeveloped portion of the land. The PRD Plan as proposed protects environmentally sensitive areas on the land and provides for significant open space in accordance with the nature of the surrounding properties. The Meta Press PRD as proposed herein better serves the public interest than if the property were developed.
It has come up before that there's a lot of things to do before the clock runs out.
I understand that I won't speak for Mr. Windrow of Land Smith, but it has been acknowledged multiple times at the planning commission level that there are a lot of placekeeping comments that are in here, more so that they do not get forgotten or overlooked or not up record when we do get the final, I won't ask them to answer that, but that was the discussion. There are a lot of comments on there that quite obviously do not even appear in the tentative approval, a tentative of a plan submission requirements.
That's why I asked the question because as I read through this and I listened to your presentation, a lot of it's already been done.
Correct.
So I just want to clarify that.
I know it's not your bailiwick, but have you done any projections about what the tax benefit will be to the township, to the school district, to the county?
Unfortunately, I do not have a whip need. It was provided. If I believe you recall, I brought a very detailed projection with respect to the county, the township, the school district, and also broke down, even down to the real estate transfers.
I want to hold. Can you make any, can you estimate?
It was well, well into six figures a percent.
All three, six figures a percent.
If I had that, I would share that information. I believe the plan was provided.
What are the price points that you need to recover?
They will be, I don't know if you can tell me, but she applies to the cost here. But we strive to be starting in the low fours. And depending on options and unit types that are selected on the single families, they could be six to seven hundred thousand, and someone really wanted to get ambitious, they often get higher than that. But that's a lot of options where they select in terms of where they put it on. And also basement units, second floor units, you know, variety of options.
I heard you talking in the planning commission, we should do some custom building. Can you describe, how much is production? How much is customer fix selections?
So the, we will offer here to quads, which are the twenty-five, four units, the duplexes. We'll only need two four plans in there, a can vary in an aggregate. Within that though, you can pick, you have the ability to choose your flooring, your lighting, your flooring, carpet, stick tops, showers. So there's a lot of customization that can be done inside the unit, albeit the unit architecture does not substantially change. We do alter it so that we don't have a monotone color with the same family.
You mentioned that you could do basement or not do basement.
Correct. We will, in two ways. There are certain lots with the plans due to topography and avoidance of streams and wetlands that must have basement, and we're going to make up that grade change. There are, we strive to keep it to a slab on grade type of unit as we have an option to build a second floor. All of the units have an option to finish a second floor, which from an economy standpoint is far more economical to go off and finish your second floor than it is to do basement. They offer to beat up.
Would you say that the quads would be instead?
Quads are always slab.
Always slab.
Always, always.
Well, let me see what then who's had a choice of basement.
Correct. And that's the market. It's, that buyer was an eighteen, seventeen, eighteen hundred square foot living space and that's adequate to their living needs. And it keeps our prices somewhat.
You even mentioned that you were trying to minimize energy usage and also provide love and air to people. Are you building to any type of energy standards like we need or do you have any certain?
We don't build to many, however, the IRS, the residential code at this point is extremely strict and getting more strict with respect to conservation of energy, air turnover in homes and things we're doing, efficiency of furnaces, efficiency of water heaters. That's a very strict code now. Lower Door West, which is basically encapsulating the whole home which you're on the lease.
Is that what you mean by air?
Not what you speak for. That's more of a PRD standard.
I didn't follow what air meant. So when we talk about PRD, what we're doing is we modify one of the traditional, you know, subdivision. We're having an exchange of some increased density and then again presented inside the open space. So to share to the community, the plant community itself, wealth of confidence. You can have your lot, you can have your building, but you're also going to be a member of association that's going to own more than your dwelling space. So you'll have an opportunity to have, you know, essentially what you do is share your park area to the open space. So that's kind of a concept is that there's a trade-off here where we're deviating from a traditional plan. We're allowing to, you know, for some increased density of it and we're setting aside open spaces that typically the traditional law will not. Hang on a moment. If the state has an MS four regulations, what is your plan to address the contribution from the urban services at this time?
I believe, are you speaking of the townships to post stormwater?
It's the state MS four regulations.
Correct, and which, and resultantly this township has, I believe, a seventy-four dollar, a seventy-six dollar a year. Is that the fee you're speaking at? I'm not sure of the question.
I was inquiring about if there was a plan in place to comply with the state's MS four regulations. Yeah, and I'm not about MS four, but as far as the impervious areas on our development, all the impervious areas we have will be collected where there exist, we will go from other stormwater facilities.
Speak up louder.
Yeah, so we have about twelve stormwater facilities on site. So the roofs, the driveways, the street will all be collected through a stormwater collection system with catch bases. Man will brought into our infiltration basin to our stormwater ponds and then discharged. And I think that's what Sean, that's what gives you guys that MS four credit. Exactly how much credit you gather, what your issue is in the town, which I did, I'm not aware of that. That's something that maybe it's up to the mayor to manage. But we will treat the stormwater before they get to our site.
So there being nothing further from the board, we'll open it up to objectors. If you have any questions for the applicants, please do it in an orderly manner. So I know that there's a full council here, but I believe there's also two other objectors that are unrepresented. Just pay attention to one of them.
John Strang, I just have a couple of quick questions. First is, what minimum lot sizes did you determine for each of the land uses shown on the tentative PRD plan? Being duplex, single family, et cetera, various uses.
Well, for the duplex, for the duplex, they can speak to the same. The duplex and the quads will be in condominium. The condominium is ownership. Condominium is not a subdivision. The way condominium is defined, you get a unit that's describing your decoration. The removal restriction will be pursuant to the flats in the plans. So there will be a flat that shows the footprint of the building, and then there will be floor plans which will show your interior dimensions. So with regard to the condominium, there is no, there's no lot size, there's no setback because that's not one of the legal constraints of the condominium in form of ownership.
The lots are beginning, they're sixty-two minimum, sixty-two minimum foot wide by approximately one hundred and twenty, depending on wherever you're applicable or whatnot. A second lot size, what was that, eighty-five, correct, on the wider, on the wider thing, it was eighty-five by one twenty. As Mr. Brandon mentioned, condominiums do not have lots.
And then did you mention duplexes?
The duplex only exists in the form of the condominium. There are no fee symbol duplexes, two-unit townhouses.
And then where specifically in zoning ordinance did you find those permissible minimum lot regulations?
I do not believe the PRD specifies, it governs, regulates by density and use rather than lot width or lot depth or size.
No, I mean, there is a front yard. Even in the PRD, there was no front yard setback requirement, side yard setback requirement, rear yard setback requirement. Those are not outlined in the PRD. We did provide a minimum for a front yard setback of twenty feet, minimum a side yard setback of seven and a half feet, minimum rear yard setback of twenty feet for the S and P and the lots. And as far as the density, based on, based on our buildable lot area, we're allowed to do as many as two hundred and fifty-four lots, and we're doing two hundred and twenty-one lots.
Thank you for your answers. That's all. Those are the two questions I had.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from?
I have a few questions. Michael Wondy, the O B I N I, the Opro Seventy.
Wait, you're talking away from me and you can't hear.
The Opro Seventy is on the map, it lives on the northwest.
You know what?
And you come over here.
We can hear you.
So I believe it's on the northwest corner, the Opro Seventy. Did you guys ask him for that modification on that side of the building?
Which modification?
I think you were asking from the three and one to two.
No, there's actually no very minimal grading between our end and way. I believe it was, the only effort would happen there is the requested volume at church's last.
Dave, is there any concerns you guys discovered yet that could disturb the cemetery whatsoever?
We have no concerns. There are no significant touch of goals in proximity to the cemetery.
Okay. And then I believe you mentioned about the traffic, the traffic generation analysis. Do you guys conduct that?
Gateway engineers would want to conduct that.
Okay, because I know there's a, the bend over there is pretty dangerous and some of my clients are concerned it's going to cause accidents. There are always some issues, I believe, that have been happening. Is that a concern you guys are looking into?
One of the things that was discussed in the planning commission was, you know, adding additional signage through those curves. Somebody provided, they showed additional signage for.
For more traffic. Would you guys consider reconstructing, maybe trying to narrow it out a little?
I cannot. We analyze that and practically speak against it's impossible. And it's not feasible to straighten out roads.
And you guys probably talked the act by after seven, I guess I believe it's regarding the planning sewage.
Yes.
When was that?
Submitted September twenty twenty-three, after four revisions through the township. Its exact submission, sorry, approval day by day, and I don't have any, but I can treat it.
And then I believe you guys said you were going to try to do some of the natural walkers. Now, there is a tree line by the McFellin and the Lawson farm. Are you guys going to be taking any of those trees out in the southeast section? Can you look over there? Yeah, some of the southeast. Yeah, I mean, right now we are showing a grade, you know, greater than fifty feet away from that property line with our residential single family houses that are there. We are closer with the stormwater facility and the waste water treatment plant. We're also adding a buffer along that entire property line, a bounded buffer all the way down to where the middle of work.
Directly answer your question. The vast majority of the area, just to speak out of word, we are, whether they're for trade or not now, we're not disturbing that layout at all.
Now, can you explain a little bit on some of the low impact, on the treatment plant, how that's going to affect the stream? Now, because my main concern here is that's going to expand the stream significantly and approach on their land. Now, if they're with, I believe it's a hundred thousand gallons. Now, can you explain a little bit how that's going to impact their stream?
I did, I ran this. Of course, I can't, more ordinary to what happens in the future. However, the plant, I assure you, it's been analyzed, it's been looked at through the stream and the P E L F one limits has been issued by D E P establishes. Here's what D E P eventually will allow to be discharged into that stream. I know that a hundred thousand gallons a day, certainly to me as well, it sounds scary. It sounds like a tidal lake of water that in reality is the equivalent of, depending on your water pressure, four or five bar hoses. You know, I've got to see all the time, but that is not.
That's all. Can you just talk about the low impact development principles? Have you guys implemented some of those? What's happening here?
Sorry, can you repeat that, please?
The low, the low impact development principles, have you guys implemented some of those? I believe there's a standard. We just have.
Speak up louder.
The stormwater design for the facility.
I can't hear you.
The stormwater design for the facility meets some township requirements, P A D P requirements. You know, like I mentioned, we have twelve facilities on site. However, you know, we do not have any low impact developing facilities or B M P facilities developing. And there weren't, there wasn't a requirement of the township for the D E P. That's other words.
All right. From the masons, do the masons have any questions?
I don't have any questions unless it's our time to present our disc, but that's later.
We'll get there in a minute, yeah.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Crowe?
None of this, no.
Thank you. All right. I don't have any other questions from the audience. Are there any questions from the board before we give the applicant? Well, it's not time for public comment right now, whoever said that. Sir, you'll have an opportunity to speak at the end of the hearing. Only parties can ask questions of the other parties. Are there any questions from the board before we give the applicant the ability to wrap up their presentation? Is there anything more from Meta Press at this time?
No, I'm just asking.
So now that Meta Press is finished with their presentation for this evening, the objectors, the party objectors have the ability to put on their own presentation. Are you prepared to do that this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So would you prefer to go first or would you prefer to have the masons and Ms. Crowe voters?
Okay, we'll let the other parties do it.
I imagine they're going to take less time, so that's my suggestion. All right, the masons, if you could come up and you'll be open to cross examination from Meta Press as well, just in one second. Can you please just state your name again for our synopsis to spell?
I'm Jeff and Allison Mason, J A L L I M.
Yes, would you guys have an additional copy of that?
Uh, maybe.
System trees of vegetation on the hillside and some concerns about the proposed PRD submission in general. One concern regarding slope calculations. Section seven oh four B five B of the PRD ordinance states in areas with slopes between twenty-five and forty percent, more than thirty percent of such areas shall be degraded, stripped of vegetation or developed. Based on provided drawing sets, this percentage of disturbed slopes is not already counting. It's counted the entire plan. It's not counting the third area of the slope.
We are questioning the way it's been calculated for the present.
The current plan uses deep slopes across climb road as part of this calculation, which are not part to be degraded or developed. It should not be counted towards what is allowed to be altered or on the present area.
Mr. Mason, if you would, when you're referring to a plan sheet, could you please try to indicate what sheet you're referring to?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Section seven oh four B five C, as shown on E X three. There is regressing of forty percent slopes, which is purple on the display. I don't really know how to pick this up because I don't have a five foot on the screen. The PRD states it allows construction of housing units off of roads or utilities to stay in the PRD ordinance. Additional units are not necessary to provide effectuation of the PRD application. We estimate these slopes will be left undisturbed. They are between units four oh one all the way over to four eleven. Section seven oh four C four states fifty percent of any building space shall be located in an area not subject to flooding or on slopes in excess of twenty-five percent slope. The shown calculated percentages on the drawings are being counted as multiple use, both recreational areas and open spaces and as undisturbed areas. The hillside, which is factored into this calculation, includes wetlands and slopes greater than twenty-five percent, which can obviously not be used as recreation. Deep slopes are being counted as open rec space throughout the entire plan. Section seven oh four C five states inactive lands are not simply considered recreational or open. The areas are not properly designated as lawn, natural area, or recreation area within the PRD. If they are designated, maintenance plans were not provided at the time of this dismissal, but this application is outlined in the ordinance. Draw E X three, existing slopes versus disturbed slopes are shown in the same color. The drawing does not clearly delineate where the existing slopes are versus what is being disturbed. Additionally.
I can just wait the board that the applicant has not established all the specific applicable criteria. I want to thank the board in public for the patience as we work through making a record this evening. One final preliminary point is I did want to request the opportunity to prepare some proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law after, a reasonable amount of time after receiving the transcript of the proceedings tonight. And maybe we can discuss that a little bit later in the hearing. With that, I'd like to call Andrew Schwartz up to testify. Mr. Schwartz, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Andrew James Worms Schwartz, landscape architect and utility planner, environmental planning designer, basic design.
And could you please just generally describe your background and experience relative to land, planning, and zoning review?
I have great hair. I've been practicing about thirty-five years. Write a lot of conference and planning licenses for the public sector. And also worked for private sector developers, like me, or a developer, the applicant before. Primary area of practice is doing zoning licenses and some of the.
And can you just generally describe the amount of times you testified in zoning hearings and what the subject matter pertains to?
Probably have testified now almost four, thirty times, probably seen thirty, thirty-five now. Oftentimes in front of, you're like the body of yourself as a part of the condition of use. Uh, oftentimes, uh, in front of, you know, like the body of yourself as a property condition to use, uh, sometimes in front of some inferior or an issue related to variance, or some sort of validity challenge, if that's a question.
And Mr. Schwartz has brought a copy of his C D, I would just request that this be made part of the record, and I, I'd like to request that we be recognized as a qualified expert in land use, planning, and zoning review by the board. Should I circulate copies of this for everyone's, uh?
Yes, please. Are there any objections from Metta Press to, uh, Mr. Schwartz being recognized as an expert, um, as a proffered? Or is he being admitted, of course, you can leave your time to look at it.
No, yes.
No, Jackson, are there any questions from the board, from Mr. Schwartz, about his, um, qualifications for one of the C A Cs?
Yes. I want to know what is A I C, D C U D, P L A, L A D A P, as soon as, I want to know what he stands for.
Yeah, so the A I C P is American Institute of Certified Planers. So, uh, a community planner, land use planner, um, goes through the national test, if they took a shooting. Goes through a national test to be able to have an extension. The C U D and the A I C P, I'm one of about just under a hundred, uh, certified for living design. So, that's what the C U D seems to be. So, that falls under A I C P, and this helps have a higher decision. Um, the P L A, uh, I'm a professional landscape architect, I'm registered in the six different states. Primarily in the landscape architecture side, like I said, we do a lot of land planning, approach development, uh, doesn't do a lot of park preparation, so that's customary stuff. Um, the, uh, the, one, or remember the question about the, the is the national standard in terms of leadership in energy environmental design. Um, it's trying to improve the environment, focused largely on individual sites, not something so much of a larger subdivision application. Have to get their test, so to get certified. And then sites, uh, A P is a similar thing to the, specifically for land dollars, so, I've got your word.
So, your expert is, uh?
Landscape architecture, the land planning, and the living design.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, uh, we will admit Mr. Schwartz's C D as, uh, Exhibit A, since the applicant used one through thirty-nine, if you have any?
Sounds, sounds perfect, thank you very much. Mr. Schwartz, have you visited the PRD development site?
Yeah.
And what, what did you review in preparation for, uh, for this evening?
Uh, looked at the current zoning ordinance, you know, as a member, uh, reviewed, uh, the township's complex of plan. Could you be the county comprehensive plan, uh, looked at the township subdivision, the zoning ordinance. Uh, needed to, the applicant's counsel had mentioned in this, I was planning, had to go back and refer to, uh, some of the standards within the M P C, and again, that's the M P C, the three D, that M P C. Uh, clearly reviewed the plan, uh, and all the documents that were provided in terms of exhibits one through, uh, third line. As well as some correspondence, uh, in terms of that was in the file, so some of what Spencer gave, whether it's some of the responses back to the township, uh, the zoning officer, uh, Owens, and so on, along the way, this is.
Mr. Schwartz prepared a written analysis of, of all of those items you mentioned, having reviewed. Uh, I just, I guess, before moving for this into the record, I'll cir, I'll circulate copies to the applicant's council. Uh, we would request that this be made part of the record, and he is, I'm going, I'm going to ask him to summarize the, uh, the high points to the board.
So, would Metta Press like to hear the testimony before, uh, determining whether or not it has some objection to, what would be Exhibit B?
That's great.
He's going to, uh, summarize his report and testify about its contents before they determine whether or not.
Okay.
Yes, please, just take it away, summarize the.
Does this microphone over here amplify anything? No.
I will try my best, is that better?
Yes.
All right. Sorry. I looked back, I didn't realize it was, it's making it right. I'll walk you through very quickly the structure, and Mr. Brandon, I'll, I'll get my highlights, because there's a lot of pages.
Can you, can you do inside this a little bit?
Um, you guys get the highlights, uh, in terms of the document itself. If you go to, uh, first page, not the, not the cover, uh, row number one introduction, it's just giving, uh, in terms of what our engagement was, what our basically assignment was, uh, we were asked to look at the PRD and opine whether we think that it is, uh, conforms with the various warnings that were applied in this situation, as well as identifying any inconsistencies. So, something that may not be clear in the ordinance, you know, not clear in the plan, so can't determine whether it's conform with those, that there's some sort of inconsistency. Uh, and then to kind of summarize that, so that's kind of what the performance assignment was. Number two is just, uh, Mr. Brandon, I asked a question, what I had reviewed, that's the same information. So, those are the documents that we took into consideration. Excerpts of those documents are.